There is an example that I brought up during the Spark meeting, which is not operated by him, but is a similar concept. It was called Walk Out. It was in the 800 block of South State Street in Chicago. That restaurant closed after a couple, maybe a year. That would be the only thing that I know of that would be similar to this concept.
Can you talk a little bit about how the restaurant would be staffed?
Yes, there's one individual who would be out front. They would take the payment. There's one individual in the kitchen and they would be cooking. That's what the owner anticipates as their normal staff.
And for the dine-in and/or the takeout, can you talk a little bit about how, is it like paper plates? Is it, you know, regular tableware and flatware? What's the...
Both the takeout and the dine-in would be disposable cutlery and disposable containers.
Is the owner familiar with and able to comply with the city's litter collection plan?
It was brought up during the Spark meeting and the owner's aware of that and willing to abide by it.
A couple of other questions regarding just general operation. I believe the hours that were given to us were 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, you said 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.?
I said till 7:00 p.m.
No, 9:00 p.m.
9:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay. We usually, when we make a recommendation to City Council, we attach some form of hours to it. We usually give you the broadest range of hours and you can operate any time within that. It appears that there will be, I mean, being a restaurant, there will be deliveries that will have to come to the facility. Is this serviced by an alley?
It is.
And there's, I'm assuming, an entrance off of the alley, so all entries, all deliveries will come through the rear?
Correct, and they anticipate two deliveries a week.
Okay. And of those deliveries, what types of trucks, what size of trucks are you assuming? Will they be semis? Will they be vans? Will they be medium-sized delivery trucks?
I can only speak from speculation, but I speculate that it would be a box truck, similar to other food delivery services.
And the, are there any parking spaces that are affiliated with the lease?
No, there are no parking spaces.
So of the two employees who will be there at any time, where are you anticipating their parking?
They'll either be street parking or they'll be taking one of the public transportation options available to them.
Okay. This is, how close? I hate not having to talk.
It's right around the corner. I don't know feet-wise, but I would assume less than 1,000 feet.
So I'm looking at, one of the things that we kind of frown upon is street parking. Whenever possible, we like to put people into garages or provide off-street parking, not only to sort of help this particular business if people are running in, getting food, everything, but all the businesses in the downtown area. So I would recommend that, that it be looked into trying to find some parking other than street parking if people will be driving. Are there other questions from...
Yeah, just, we probably should have started here, but the applicant is not here tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and what's your relationship to the business or to the applicant?
I'm the architect for the project.
Okay.
So do we want to put that as a, the intent to find garage parking as part of our conditions if we are proposing that we recommend for approval?
I would, I would like to see that. I mean, that's usually something we try to encourage through our recommendation.
That's a difficult area, and there is a garage down at the corner.
Yes, I mean, this is, this is right in our downtown area, so parking is metered for the most part, and there are a number of garages in the downtown area, so I would, I would recommend that we would try to get parking off the street as possible, if possible.
Assuming that the metered ordinance that you have, which only allows parking for two hours at a time, it'd be pretty difficult to comply with that as one of the individuals working in, especially because you couldn't leave the post if there's only one individual out front. Can it be assumed that if they did drive, they would have to find parking in a parking structure anyway, rather than require it as part of the ordinance? If we required it as part of the submittal, my fear is that they would have to release a space somewhere, and that space may not be used if both employees take public transit.
The way we typically would condition it would be that employees of the venture would not be allowed to use street parking and would have to find off-street parking.
Okay, so they find it on their own.
Right.
Okay.
Other questions from the board?
I just have a question about the way the business is run. I don't know if you know anything about it, but is there a lot of cooking? Is it pre-cooked food that's delivered and it's kind of warm there? How's the operation?
It is not pre-cooked food. All the food is cooked on-site, similar to a traditional restaurant. It's just the, it's cook-and-hold concept, so with the buffet-style restaurant, it's almost like going to a buffet. They cook it in the kitchen, they bring it out to the buffet, it's held in a warming pan or a cooling pan, depending on what they're serving, and you come and you pick up the food then. When the food is depleted in the warming tray, then typically it is prepared again. Or if it has met certain health standards and has to be thrown out, then it's prepared again.
So would Spark look at their kitchen upgrades for that site? Is that who looks at that?
They would be required to meet all code requirements as part of their food license.
Okay.
And we've submitted both the Building Department and the Health Department separately.
What is currently in this space?
It's currently a vacant space. I don't know what was in there previously.
Sir Speedy.
Yes, it was previously occupied by Sir Speedy Printing and Copying.
Okay. So this will be a complete new build-out for a kitchen? There's no existing kitchen in the space or anything?
Correct.
Can you describe how the, how the kitchen will be exhausted?
Yes, there will be a new, a black iron duct that will leave the kitchen and continue up the side of an existing brick chimney that serves the boiler, I believe the boiler of the building, and it'll be attached to that at the top of the brick chimney, so at the roof level, there will be a kitchen exhaust fan located there.
How often, how many times a day do you anticipate food will be prepared fresh?
I couldn't begin to speculate. I assume that it would be multiple times a day, because they would be replenishing the buffet area. Most likely in the morning would be one of the heavy times, and then I would assume when people are coming back from the train at the end of their workday. My hunch is those would be their two busiest times.
If not, if there's anything you'd like to give us in summation, which you don't feel you have to?
I know the owner's pretty excited about operating a restaurant here. Perhaps I can offer that.
All right. With that, we will close the record and we will begin our deliberations. This is a special use, and as is custom with all of our special uses, there are a series of standards that we must find are met to make a positive recommendation to City Council. And we will go through those standards, but first I just wanted to get general consensus if anybody has any particular issues they're concerned about, and if not, we'll go through those standards. All right. The standards for special use, standard number one, the requested special use is on the special uses listed in the zoning ordinance, and this being in the downtown retail core district, we noticed that a type-two restaurant is one of the approved special uses, so this standard has been met. The requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance. Again, this being our downtown core area, this is the type of business that we would expect to find in this area, retail, restaurants, and the like, so I believe that this standard also has been met. Number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood. Again, going back to the fact that this is the downtown core area, this is a heavily serviced area, this is where we expect to find the most densely packed concentration of businesses, and so I believe that standard number three also has been met. Number four, this requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. We have heard no testimony that would lead us to believe that there's going to be anything that will be detrimental to the property itself or nearby properties, and therefore I believe standard four has been met. Number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by the public facilities and services. Again, this being the downtown core, we would expect to see this type of business, and the city has made arrangements so that the public facilities and the services provided will be able to meet the addition of this type of establishment, so this standard has been met. Number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. We know that there is a metro station nearby, the CTA is nearby, and also the fact that there are parking garages nearby means that a majority of the people coming through would be able to find parking if they drove, or it is anticipated that a number of people coming through will be commuters on their way to or from work or grabbing lunch for people working in the downtown area, so I believe that that standard has been met. Number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. There is nothing that I know of in this, with this particular building, that makes it of any historical value to the city of Evanston, and since the exterior of the building does not appear to be being altered in any way, I believe that this standard has been met. Number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. This standard really does not apply, I don't think, in this particular area. As I said, this is an existing building. It should not create any additional impact on the environment or the area around it. And number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances. We don't, we have not heard anything that would lead us to believe that, that anything created here would create regulatory issues, and most of the regulations that are going to be applied to this type of establishment are going to come from boards and departments other than this one, so I believe that standard number nine also has been met. Does everyone agree with my findings on the standards?
Yes.
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 Rather enthusiastic there.
What are, what are the hours for this area that we would typically impose on a condition?
10 to 12.
I was gonna say, it's 10 to midnight usually is, is kind of what we have imposed in the downtown area.
That's what we did the last time, for the last restaurant we were doing, just last meeting. We did 10 to 12.
So with that, I will ask if there is a motion in this matter.
I'll make a motion. In the matter ZBA 14ZMJV-0002 regarding the property at 1,009 Davis Street, a move that we recommend to City Council to approve the special use requested on the following conditions. One, that the hours of operation be limited from 10:00 a.m. till midnight. Two, that employees of the business be required to utilize off-street parking to the extent that they drive to the downtown area for work. Three, that the applicant be required to comply, familiarize themselves with and comply with the city's garbage and litter collection plans, and that the property otherwise be developed in accordance with the testimony and documents submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of making the approval recommendation to City Council, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It appears that it has five aye votes and zero negative votes, so it'll go to City Council with a recommendation for approval. Good luck with your project. Our second matter on the agenda tonight is for 2430 Main Street, and I will ask, Melissa, please read that into the record.
Ginger Maddox, Lessee, applies for a special use permit to establish a type-two restaurant, Just Turkey, at 2430 Main Street. 2430 Main Street is located in the C1 Commercial District, which requires a special use permit for a type-two restaurant to operate, Zone Code Section 61023. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are special use application submitted December 26th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, business plan, plot of survey dated December 7th, 2005, site plans, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map, and Spark meeting minutes of January 2nd, 2014.
Thank you. The applicant is present. If I could swear in the applicant and anybody else who may wish to speak to us this evening. If you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you could begin by telling us your name and address, please.
Ginger Maddox, 1710 Dempster Street, Evanston, Illinois 60202. So basically, Just Turkey is a southside franchise. There's about five or six of them. They serve everything from turkey burgers, wraps, salads, everything's made on-site. I actually own one in Edgewater, and I'm moving it to Evanston because I'm from here and I think it's a great concept. So Just Turkey's normally, this one will seat about 20 people, but we definitely know that people really come in and they buy and then they take out. So there's usually one cashier, there's two cooks. At a given time, there's free parking outside, and deliveries go through the back. This sits next to the Great Clips and Sarpino's and Little Wok, so there are already restaurants that are in this little strip center and the new gas station. So we all share a common garbage, garbage waste on the side, and then we have an exit in the back that deliveries will come through the rear. We do want to do take, delivery as well, so that would go through the front when we're delivering to homes. And I did bring, I don't know if you guys went to see a menu to see what, just what we have, but you know, everything's made fresh on, on scene, so, on site.
You obviously listened during the last presentation.
Sure.
You gave us most of the facts right up front.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, you said you own one of these restaurants in Edgewater and you're relocating it to Evanston, or would this be your second one?
I'm relocating it.
Okay, so do you plan to be on-site, working at the restaurant, or...
No, I just, you know, I, I'm there three, four, or five days a week, but definitely have a cashier, and then I do have an assistant manager and two cooks in the, in the back at all times, because everything is made fresh, from lasagna to spaghetti, nothing is processed, even the burgers.
I, I'd like to see a venue that's interesting.
Yeah, and then I do have, my architect did 3D drawings of what we need back inside.
And do we need to mark this? Do you want to mark it first before you pass it around?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well...
It's, it's just if you give us things, then we have to, we mark them as exhibits and, and you can't get them back, is that okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay, so give them to Chairman Rogers first.
So I'll go ahead and take them and mark these.
That's the inside.
So what I'm receiving are two 3D renderings from the architect of the interior space showing a front counter with service as well as a couple tables, and I...
And then they'll be seeing me look out the window, because the gas station is right in front.
I'm going to ask you to speak into this, just so we can make sure we're picking up anything you say.
Okay, no, I'm saying that there's, there's, you know, there's a counter in the front, there's also two tables, and then there's a, we have a counter attached to the window where you can kind of people-watch the gas station if you choose to, so, definitely.
Is there an existing business in that space?
No, it's, you know, it's the Old Kelly Nails that moved. So it's 1,200 square feet, and right now it will be a complete build-out, but there is a unit on top that's already in place, so, because of the other restaurants, there's a unit. We do have to do a full build-out, but that's...
Okay, and I'll also take the menu, so I can mark that if I can mark on it.
Yeah, so the menu's...
So I have labeled the two previous pieces I received as applicant exhibit A and B, and I am marking the menu as applicant C.
Do you need this, or...
You can actually just lay it down, turn it off and lay it down on the, on the lectern So with your, with your location, is there, do you have parking that is specifically for employees of yours, or do they just find parking in the general parking lot? I know it's a large parking lot that they have there.
Yeah, they find parking, and that's included in the rent for the parking lot. So they can park wherever in there. There's parking in front, there's parking on the side, around by the Sands Club area, just park, so that's, that's a good thing. That was one of the highlights of me coming to Evanston.
And you'd mentioned that you would be doing some delivery, aside from anything that's dine-in or take-out. Do you have any anticipated percentage as to what portion of your business will be delivery, what portion will be dine-in, what portion will be take-out?
Well, the colder months, about 10%, you know, lunchtime businesses want things delivered. Depending if this picks up, then we'll hire an onsite, kind of like our Sarpino's has an onsite. Other than that, you kind of pay for service and they come, you call them, and they come, and then they pick up the food and then they take it out. But, I mean, summer months, it really slows down. Winter, like today, would be a day that, yeah, I'd rather order my turkey leg and get it delivered.
And how long have you owned the operation that's in Edgewater?
A little over a year, but I, you know, I, like I said, looked at the demographics and crunched the numbers and thought Evanston would be the better fit, and we got a lot of Evanston customers that actually came up, but it was just, parking was so bad.
And you're on Bryn Mawr?
I was on Bryn Mawr and Broadway, yes.
Okay.
A tough spot.
Yeah.
That is a brutal spot for parking.
I used to live in that neighborhood.
Yeah, it is, and that was a really a tough thing, and then especially even delivery, because you have the high rises that don't want to pay the fee. I'm like, they're like down the street and, you know, so this just makes the better fit, and Just Turkey really caters to, you know, blue collar, working class, and even college students, some of the things, and it's a healthier alternative than pork and beef, so...
Have you read the city's litter collection plan?
Yes, and I know that, we went over it a couple weeks ago, but definitely I know there's already an existing, you know, garbage collection on the side. All food, all garbage will go through the back, so there's a, like a nice warm hallway to get us to the back, so never we'll go through the front. Deliveries will also go through the rear, just the basic things that the landlord requires to. They don't want a bunch of garbage coming through the front.
Not just in terms of removal, but in a take-out business, you understand you're also responsible for the space in the front of your property?
Yes.
Can you just then confirm, as a type-two restaurant, you don't plan to have any actual silverware or flatware? It's all disposable?
Well, we do keep it behind the counter, certain knives, because of the, the turkey legs are really big, and so the plastic doesn't really work, but again, it's not something, most of it's plastic, that's, we keep a couple. If people are sitting down, then we'll give you, it's not like a steak knife, but at least a sturdier knife, so that's usually the only time that we have, because you can't really cut them with the small plastic knives. I don't know. But we can change, it's just that's what customers prefer.
What's the reason why the ordinance requires type-two restaurants to use only disposable?
It's not a requirement, it's more of one of the things that we use to help distinguish between the two, because type-two restaurants typically have disposable items, that's why we have the litter collection plan, so it is okay if they use non-disposable.
So it's not disposable?
It's really, it's really the difference is the type ones do not generate as much waste as a type-two take-out would. In a type-one, you're typically having china, silver, that sort of stuff that's going through a dishwasher as opposed to being thrown out. Are there any other questions for Ms. Maddox? Hearing none. Is there anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
Just excited, I mean, you know, I'm from Evanston and I'm excited to bring Just Turkey to Evanston. Actually had one of the security guards from the high school come up to Bryn Mawr, a couple of the police officers, so, hope, you know, does well here. That's about, that's about it.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to us on this matter? I'm not seeing anyone, so at this time, we will go ahead and close the record and begin our deliberations. I would like to say first off that I think it's nice to see someone from Evanston who's bringing their business back into Evanston.
I agree.
From, from Chicago. I think that the, the area that it's going into is obviously one that is very well-developed specifically for a small restaurant like this to fit in. I mean, we've, on the years that I've been on the board, we've approved, I think, a number of the little restaurants that are in there. Sarpino's, Ring Stop was one of them. So I mean, this is, this is typical of the, of the type of business that we would expect to be seeing in this location. Any other general thoughts from the board? All right. With that, again, like I had to in the last case, we will go through the nine standards for special use and make the determination for our recommendation to City Council. The first is, the requested special use is on the list of special uses in the zoning ordinance. This being a commercial district, and as I mentioned, there are a number of restaurants already there, we know that a type-two restaurant is an approved special use for this, for this specific zoning district, and therefore that standard has been met. Number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance. Again, this being a commercial district, is the type of area where we would expect to see retail establishments, restaurants, and the like, and so this standard also has been met. Number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood. This being a commercial district which is bordered by several commercial districts, and again, this being a development that was specifically created to house this type of establishment, I believe that the negative cumulative effect will not occur when the approval of this type of an establishment, so I believe standard number three has been met. Number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. As I just mentioned, there's a number of commercial districts that border this area, and so the value of the individual properties really are only worth more, the more successful businesses that we put into this type of an area, so I believe that standard four has also been met. Number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. This is a fairly new development in the city of Evanston that includes everything from grocery stores to retail, to wholesalers, to a recently-approved gas station by this very board. And so the city has obviously... And so the city has obviously provided the type of facilities and services that will be needed for this type of an establishment, so I believe standard five has also been met. Number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. There are several entrances in and out of the parking lot for the specific area, as well as there being parking lots, so there's no issue with on-street parking creating any sorts of problems, even for people running in to grab a bite to eat, there's no need for, for double parking, that sort of thing, so I don't believe that there will be any additional traffic congestion into this area from this one restaurant. Number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. This is again a relatively new development, and I am unaware of any historical significance to it, and so I believe standard seven also has been met. Number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. This stat, or this particular standard, again, I don't feel necessarily comes into play here, this is an existing structure, we aren't proposing to do any additional paving or construction on the lot, so this standard, I believe, has been met. And number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances. Again, like I had mentioned with the previous one, most of the regulations that will be imposed on a restaurant come from boards other than this one, but we see no reason why there would be any regulations that would cause problems based on our approval, our recommendation of approval of a special use. Does everyone agree with my findings?
Agreed.
Yep.
Yes.
You're very enthusiastic, Mary Beth. With that, I will ask for a motion.
I move in the matter ZBA 14ZMJV-0003 regarding the property at 2430 Main Street that we recommend to city council to approve the special use requested on the following conditions, that the hours of operation be limited from 10:00 a.m. till midnight seven days a week, that the applicant be familiar with and comply with the city's litter collection and garbage pickup plans, and that the property otherwise be developed in accordance with the documents submitted and testimony given tonight.
There is a second? All those in favor of recommending to city council approval for 2430 Main Street, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes five to zero. Good luck with city council and with your project. Those are the two cases that we have on our agenda this evening. Is there anything else to be brought before the board?
Just to note that our next regularly-scheduled meeting is for February 4th, however, that meeting will be canceled due to a lack of items, so our next meeting after that will be February 18th.
So with that, and there being no other matters to discuss this evening, we stand adjourned until February 18th in city council chambers.